...the ability to weigh in on their thoughts on these development projects. And to that end, I mean, I said, I will not, I pledge not to take any contributions from developers. First, because there's so much distrust from the community that I want to show them that I'm coming from a clean slate, that I'm not going to be influenced by them. And what's the easiest way not to be influenced by them? By not taking their contributions. And second, we went further with our website to be interactive. We also said, anytime I meet with a developer, we will let you know. So we post the meetings with the developers, so they know who we met with, what information we got, and we share that information, which is all public information, by the way.
Here's a chance for you to be involved with Council District Four. Reporting for LA this week, I'm Rasha Goal.
Councilman Rue's website is davide Rue dot com. While city officials unveil a new streetlight that helps Angelino stay connected, the mayor shows his support for the radio industry, and a middle school in North Hollywood honors one of their own. All these stories in City Beat. The nation's first smart pole streetlight at Gower in Santa Monica was unveiled recently by LA Mayor Eric Garcetti. The Philips Smart Poles are equipped with energy-efficient LED lighting and wireless technology. One hundred streetlights will be installed across Los Angeles over the next year. Five hundred additional poles will be added over the next four years. Officials say the smart poles will deliver enhanced, reliable wireless broadband coverage to businesses, visitors, and citizens by integrating Ericsson's small cell technology into standard city streetlights, improving the wireless network for Angelino's smartphones in dense urban areas.
Nothing is more important to our daily life than how quickly we can connect. It means people can apply for jobs, they can check their email, they can connect with their family, they can do the work that fuels both the personal and business life of our city.
The mayor was also the keynote speaker at the recent Broadcasters Association Outstanding Achievement in Radio Advertising Awards luncheon, held at the Sheraton Universal Hotel in Universal City. The luncheon honored radio advertisers that support the industry. The mayor, who co-hosts his own segment called Ask the Mayor on KNX 1070 AM, said that radio plays an important role in our everyday lives.
Radio is this great connector of us to the community here in Los Angeles.
Madison Middle School in North Hollywood dedicated its gym to alumni and retired Los Angeles Lakers guard Gale Goodrich, who played on the Lakers from 1971 to 1972, during a time when the team won 33 straight games and produced four members of the NBA Hall of Fame, including James Worthy, who was also on hand. City Councilman Paul Krikorian also presented Goodrich with a city certificate.
It's a phenomenal achievement. It's a phenomenal demonstration of greatness.
It really doesn't get any better than this.
San Pedro prepares for disaster, the kind where neighborhood volunteers do most of the heavy lifting. Gil Reyes shows us in this CERT training exercise.
The rescuers in the green vests are not firefighters, nor are they law enforcement. The regular civilians, like most of our neighbors, ready to serve when disaster strikes.
There's strength in community, there's strength in preparation, and there's strength in our allied agencies, and that's what this is about tonight.
More than 100 volunteers take part in CERT training in San Pedro. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Teams. This exercise, a simulated explosion at the port's World Cruise Center, provides valuable lessons.
In medical response, in triage, in fire suppression, in search and rescue.
In a real disaster, police and firefighters might be too busy to respond to emergencies in your area. If so, it's CERT to the rescue. Volunteers must undergo a 21-hour training course led by LA City firefighters to help ensure neighborhoods will be safe during a fire, flood, or terrorist strike.
And even if we just help our block, or if we live in an apartment building, even if we just help everybody in that building, make sure they're safe and tend to their wounds, should they have any, we're ahead of the game.
This drill is a lesson on prioritizing, deciding who needs first aid and hospitalization, and who can wait. Volunteers from St. Mary's Hospital donned the Hollywood makeup to make the scenario more realistic.
I really do think this training is important. I've never been to a training like this, so whatever knowledge I can gain from this will help me out in the future.
And possibly save lives when the unexpected happens. In San Pedro, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
CERT is offering training if you want to volunteer. Find out more at cert-la.com. Well, it's an annual tradition that puts the spotlight on African culture and brings communities together through art and dance. Dancer Amber Tell gets into the rhythm of the music. Her high-energy and upbeat dance comes from Guinea West Africa. She chose to perform it because the dance not only represents her African heritage, but it also has special meaning for her.
We did it to celebrate the balance between the mothers and the daughters, and to express femininity.
Tell was just one of many performers, dancers, artists, and musicians who showcased their talents and paid tribute to African culture at the Lemer Park Village African Art and Music Festival.
I grew up in this neighborhood, so I feel it's my responsibility to come out and show support, you know, each time we have this festival.
The annual festival began in 2009 and is the signature event of the Lemer Park Village Group, whose mission is to promote culture, commerce, and community. And there were certainly plenty of culture on hand, from a variety of African artwork and artifacts, to boldly patterned clothing, vibrant jewelry, and of course, the soulful sound of some dynamic voices. Sponsored by Council District 10 and other community groups and organizations, festival organizers say the event not only seeks to highlight African culture, but also to broaden the understanding of our diverse backgrounds. Pershing Square transforms into a winter wonderland, some of the latest cars on the market roll into the LA Convention Center, and a murder mystery at the Getty. All this and this week's things to do. It's the coolest place for the hottest holiday happenings. Holiday Ice Ring in Pershing Square kicks off its amazing 18th season for ice skating under the sun and stars in the heart of downtown Los Angeles. Open every day now until January 18, 2016. Encircled by towering skyscrapers, the stunning pop-up icecape transforms Pershing Square into a winter wonderland with a host of free community and special events. The Yuletide traditions continue with DJ Thursday nights, skating exhibitions, Single in the City Skate Night, a Snoopy on Ice showcase, the Winter Holiday Festival, and the Polar Bear Skate, among others. Join the fun at Pershing Square located at 532 South Olive Street. For more, visit holidayicrinkdowntownla.com. Tokyo drifts into the Convention Center for the 10-day LA Auto Show with cars that would make even Bond rule. If you're a car nerd, get behind the wheel to test drive one of the cherry rides with celebrities meet and greet at the manufacturer exhibits. With world and North American debuts from BMW, Chevrolet, Jaguar, and more rev up for the machines of the future. The LA Auto Show rolls into the LA Convention Center located at 1201 South Figueroa Street starting Friday, November 20 through November 29. It's the Watson Adventures Murder at the Getty Scavenger Hunt. A murdered curator has left behind a cryptic trail of clues connected with secrets and works at the Getty Center in Los Angeles. As your team gathers answers about the art, you'll piece together a sordid tale revolving around a planned purchase of a rare painting by Leonardo da Vinci. To solve the mystery, you'll have to crack a secret code left in the victim's appointment calendar. Can you figure out whodunnit? The scavenger hunt takes place November 21 from 4:30 to 7:00 PM at the Getty Center
You can't control where that ember will land, only what happens when it does.
in Los Angeles. For more information, visit watsonadventures.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
Get Fire Adapted now at fireadapted.org.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit.
Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us.
Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel
A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
35. Our city, our channel.
We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Corretso, Farrell, Price, Rue. Let's go, we've got a quorum, see? Good morning, good morning everyone, it is Friday, November 20th, and we want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Today is, uh, it looks to me like it's gonna be a very, very special Friday, Madam Clerk, so why don't we get things started? We have a quorum, could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Puscaino, Cidio, Englander, Fuentes, Herstassen, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, what's the first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Fuentes moves, Englander seconds, next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corretts moves, and Mr. Price seconds. That brings us where?
Uh, Mr. President, there are requests from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file Item 1A as the property is determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and exempt from lien procedures, and to reduce the lien on Item B to $1,456.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Let's continue.
Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Do we have cards on this item?
Yes, there are cards.
Okay, let's hold that, and let's move on to the next set of agenda items.
Items 2 through 12 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Energy and Environment Committee reports for Items 2 and 3, and the Trade Commerce and Technology Committee reports for Items 10, 11, and 12 have all been submitted and circulated for consideration.
Okay, members, specials? Mr. Blooming, Mr. Bloomingfield?
Item 3, please, for special.
Uh, we're gonna hold Item 3 for Mr. Bloomingfield. Members, any other? I don't see any, let us prepare to, um, vote on these items, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next?
Items 13 and 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on 13 and 14.
Okay, that brings us where?
Takes council back to presentations, or items called special?
All right. I think we should start out with a very, very important presentation by Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Bloomingfield, knowing how I, as your president, feel about these, and Mr. Bonin, these animals, you and Mr. Bonin can have anything you want. I mean, this is a great day. These are phenomenal, uh, animals, members, if you haven't had a chance to shake a hand, or, or pat the top of one of their, their heads, or tummies, please go ahead. With that said, Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Bonin, the floor belongs to the dynamic duo.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I first want to put out a warning for folks who are in the audience, or, or potentially watching. If you are allergic to adorable and cute, you need to double down on your medication, or leave the chambers immediately. Uh, because we have a special presentation here.
That was a reference to me.
And Mr. Bonin, of course. It's a pleasure to welcome and introduce you to the volunteers of the LAX Pets Un-stressing Passengers Program. Pets Un-stressing Passengers, otherwise known as PUP. Although some of these guys look, look pretty big for pups. Now, when traveling grows stressful, when passengers feel weary, or restless, what's been known to help is our four-legged friends, our tail-wagging volunteers, who answer the call of these passengers. And this is especially important these days, we're approaching the busiest day of the year, the busiest week of the year in airport travel, this Thanksgiving week. So these guys dutifully answer the call, helping to relieve anxiety, and creating an exceptional, one could say, pot-tastic, travel experience at Los Angeles International Airport. There are about 20 airports across the U.S. and Canada that have therapy dog programs. And LAX has the largest program with over 30 dogs. Many of these volunteer dogs are here today with us. There are a variety of dogs, as you can see to my right and to my left. We've got Dalmatians, Poodles, Dobermans, Austrian Labradoodles, Terriers, and many more. All of whom are trained, professional dogs in de-stressing and unstressing passengers. These volunteer pups and their handlers bring joy to thousands of passengers that come through LAX every year. The handlers and therapy dogs, both, both dressed in red vests, they roam the departure level, in the gate areas of the terminal, they visit passengers that are waiting flights, provide comfort, as well as airport information. Usually, it's the, it's the, um, human volunteers that have to provide the airport information, but these dogs, they, they are remarkable in many ways. Most recently, these pup volunteers were instrumental in easing guests' concerns about travel after the Paris attacks last week. In addition to providing guests with comfort, the PUP program educates and informs passengers about LAX projects and construction-related traffic impacts. We're undertaking, in LAX, as you know, the largest public works project in the nation, a major transformation of our airport. And there's gonna be a lot of dislocation that's happening, but we have the pups on the job to help people through it. These volunteers must have at least one year of experience working with a recognized dog therapy organization before they're, uh, allowed to work the, uh, LAX airport. The dogs must be privately owned, and be at at least two years old. And all pup volunteers and dogs must be registered with the Alliance of Therapy Dogs, which is a national organization that registers, insures, and supports members who are involved in volunteer animal-assisted activities. The PUP program wouldn't be possible without the leadership of Heidi Hubner, who we're gonna hear from in a moment. Heidi is the Director of the Volunteer Services at LAX, and she's responsible for putting together this amazing program. Uh, so let's give Heidi a round of applause. Through her direction, the PUP program continues to grow and bring happiness to so many people. Uh, I'd like to introduce now my colleague, the great Mike Bonin, who represents, uh, the airport in his council district, to say a few words, uh, before we bring up Heidi. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, we all know that your birthday was last week, and Mr. Bloomingfield and I thought that there couldn't be a better way to give you a birthday gift than bring in, uh, a bunch of dogs here into chambers. I want to thank, not just Mr. Bloomingfield for bringing this presentation in today, and all of the volunteers, but I want to thank Los Angeles World Airports for putting this program together. As Mr. Bloomingfield said, this is one of the largest such programs in the entire country. And it shows a commitment at the airport that I'm very proud of, to putting the passenger experience first. This airport has been going, undergoing, a, a big transformation, a transformation that is gonna continue for several years to come, where we're trying to put a premium on the passenger experience. We're trying to make the terminals more pleasant and more friendly. We're trying to make getting in and out of the airport easier and more convenient. And this is another example of an out of, out of the bo, outside-the-box way of the airport trying to put the passenger first, by giving them a way to feel more relaxed and more comfortable in the airport. We have airports around the world, that some of us have had the pleasure of seeing, Inshaun Airport among them, where the passenger experience is really put first. And this is a way that our airport is, is putting the passenger experience first. And I've been in the airport, when I've seen stressed-out passengers playing with these dogs, and, and enjoying their company. So I'm just really glad that, that we're highlighting this, particularly right before the busiest travel day of the year. And, um, Mr. Wesson, there's no need to come up here and, and pitch for a home, because all of these dogs, uh, have great homes, uh, and great masters.
I want to have one of the, the owners take me home.
Great, so next, we could have Heidi come on up. Where's Heidi? There she is. All right, Heidi?
Oh my gosh, this is amazing.
Welcome, Heidi, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Where's yours?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm speechless for just a second, because this is a huge honor for all of us. You have no idea, this is like, the end-all, be-all. So we just appreciate you having us here. Uh, my name is Heidi Hubner, and I am the Director of our volunteer program for Los Angeles World Airports. At LAX, we have adopted a hospitality mindset, where we strive for exceptional experience for all of our guests. We have teams of people who do this on a daily basis. And our furious team members are here with us today, the pups, or Pets Un-stressing Passengers. And that's exactly what these therapy dogs do, they unstress passengers. Pets have been known to have an amazing effect on relieving stress and anxiety. And these pups are exceptionally helpful in calming the nerves, and creating a friendly, positive experience for our travelers. We launched the program in April 2013, and it has been an amazing journey. We have brought smiles and happiness to thousands of guests, and employees at LAX. The pups are quite famous, um, with their stress-busting talents. We've been featured in 150 newspapers, 20 magazines, and 23 television outlets around the world, including Germany, Brazil, Australia, and the Ukraine. They've been on CNN several times, as well as The Today Show, Brian Williams Rock Center, Jay Leno, and the NBC Nightly News. We even made Oprah's Magazine. Pretty cool. Um, we've been featured in some documentaries for German and French TV, and just shot for Disney Australia. So they are a wonderful ambassador for the city of Los Angeles. We currently have 40 dogs in the program, with 12 more in the process of getting certified. And we have assisted 31 airports nationwide, and foreign Canada. We are really honored to be here today, and to be recognized by our city council members. We would really like to thank Councilman Bloomingfield for his kind invitation today, and also to Councilman Bonin. So on behalf of all of our amazing volunteers, and the pups who diligently work to create an exceptional guest experience, we say thank you so much. Thank you.
And we'd like to present to you a little-
You know what, Mr. Bloomingfield, we do have a couple of, uh, members that want to say a few words, and, and I, I bet you could guess who they are, but I am going to, I'm gonna defer to my dear friend, and allow him to go first, in Mr. Paul Corretts.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, this is a very pleasant surprise this morning. I think I can speak for Herb, at least, and say that we were both in dog heaven when we came here. Uh, I, I wasn't sure if each of these dogs were nice enough to do this, so I had to visit with each one individually. And I can certify them as, as the sweetest group of dogs I've ever seen. They're perfect for, uh, for what they do, and also interesting, a lot of interesting breeds and personalities, and, uh, this is such a brilliant program, what a great story. Um, and, and so positive, and so smart to do. So I congratulate all of you on your participation in this. This is just a wonderful idea, and a, a wonderful thing that we're doing at the airport. So, thank you for everything you've, you've done on this, and, uh, thank you to, uh, to Councilmember Bloomingfield and Bonin for, uh, bringing this to us. Thank you so much.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Give Mr. Corretts a round of applause. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President, I was just telling Herb, Wesson, this, this is the cutest presentation we've ever had at City Council. And I hope everyone is, uh, watching this, and everyone realizes that, uh, you know, this is a great reminder that we need to adopt, out of our animal shelters. We have animals that need homes, they're loving animals, just like these beautiful dogs are. And I think some of these are rescues, as well. So let's keep rescuing, anyone who's watching this, and you're considering, um, having a, a new member of your family, please go to one of our animal shelters and adopt, 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 adopt. And spay and neuter, that is the way to end euthanasia in our shelters. So thank you so much, this is a wonderful program. Thank you, uh, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Bloomingfield, for bringing this forward. This is, like I said, this is like the best presentation we've ever had. Thank you.
And, and I too want to add, that it is a very special day. I mean, we have dogs that have their own baseball cards. It just doesn't say what positions they play with. And, and that's phenomenal, and, uh, I had an opportunity to go out and chat with, uh, the good folk here, and meet Vegas, and Shiloh, and a lot of the, the, the dogs that are here today. But I just want to say two things. They do a phenomenal job at the airport, no secret about that. But there are a lot of dogs that do the same type of work in hospitals. Where they go and they visit, in fact, I was at, in fact, we have a couple of our, right over here, Mission, what hospital was that, Mission? Mission? Yeah, see Kaiser, I mean, so, that's just a good thing. And I was at Kaiser as they came, and walked around with them to a few rooms. But, the last thing, and most important, we need to acknowledge the people behind the dogs. You've heard us say that the dogs are sweet, and gentle, and very loving. Each and every one of you are, as well. So let's please give them a round of applause. Thank you so very much for coming, and please continue the good work. And wait, which one, we, where's, is Nigel, who weighs 125 pounds? Can, is there any way we can put? Well, nobody can pick Nigel up, but you have to trust me. We have a couple of, uh, dogs that weigh more than me, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Bloomingfield, the, the floor is yours.
Is that Nigel? That's Nigel right over there.
Yeah, I love Nigel, look at-
Well, you know, we talk about de-stressing, folks. This, this council chambers is often a place of high stress, but I can, I can feel the, the change already. And I'm sure his public comment comes later, it'll be a whole, uh, love fest as we move forward. So, uh, Ms. Hubner, we'd like to present this to you for the, the Pets Un-stressing Passengers, it's really, it's for you, and it's for all of the, the amazing volunteers who make this program happen, make it special. We're pleased to be able to have acknowledged this program here in City Hall, uh, because we are, as a city, are proud of you, we're proud of the organization, we're proud of these pups for what you do, so thank you, and please accept this small token.
Thank you so much.
Miss? Mr. Corretts?
And I have, we have certificates for each of the volunteers, and we're gonna do those in the back room, so we don't take the change, but each one of you is gonna get a, a certificate of appreciation from the city.
Mr. Corretts wants to close.
Thank you, uh, I, I just had to say one thing, since it was mentioned, uh, uh, that there are wonderful, gentle dogs that do this in hospitals. 11 years ago or so, my daughter was paralyzed for months in Children's Hospital. And, uh, the visits from, uh, some of the dogs, uh, were one of the things that helped her, uh, get through it. She's now fully recovered and happy, and we have our own animals, of course, at home, but, uh, it was very meaningful, and so, all the wonderful things you do, do with these wonderful, gentle dogs, I want to thank all of you for it again. Thank you.
Again, thank you all. Thank you all so very much. Are you gonna take all of them in the back, Mr. Bloomingfield? All right. I will join you shortly, soon as I find Mr. Englander. Okay. If everybody could please just follow the dogs? To the back? Rue, they are a gorgeous lot. Mr. O'Farrell, please do not return to your seat, because I'd like to recognize you. Let's let it get a little quiet, Mitchell. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd now like to present Mitch O'Farrell from the great 13th District.
Thank you so much. I think the most unenviable position for anyone is to follow a dog on any stage, because you're automatically upstaged. But, the man I'm about to introduce is someone who, in Los Angeles, the kind of person that we always like to celebrate because of his significant contributions to society. And that is Mr. Jamie Masada, owner of The Laugh Factory. Jamie Masada is the founder and CEO of The Laugh, of The Laugh Factory. A heart of an angel in our city of angels, for his 35 years of helping the underprivileged children and the homeless in the city of Los Angeles. I have the great privilege of, since being in council, attending a YMCA fundraiser every year at The Laugh Factory that he hosts. As a former employee of the YMCA, I have a, a special calling to be there. A philanthropist, and innovator of creating programs such as The Laugh Factory Comedy Camp, giving disadvantaged children in the Los Angeles, uh, area an opportunity to spend 16 Saturdays working on their own comedy routines with mentors such as Ellen DeGeneres. Also, The Laugh Factory's Bob Hope USO fundraiser, benefiting the USO and the annual holiday Thanksgiving dinner for the homeless. Uh, joining us today, along with Mr. Masada, I know that we have comedian Paul Rodriguez. Uh, and, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and bring, uh, Jamie up to say a few words.
All right, just give him a round of applause. Thank you, guys, for coming in.
Thank you, President, and thank you all of the chamber, I really appreciate it. The only reason I'm in here, and first of all, I'm really honored by being recognized and humbled, but I think the only thing we should all do, try to have more private sector be in charge and helping underprivileged kids, because we have so many underprivileged kids in this, this town, we need all of the help. So you guys can help us, you, you know, would be wonderful to do. And I have one person with us in here, Tiffany Haddish. She was one of the underprivileged kids, she came in the comedy camp, and she now starring in the show on NBC called Carmichael's. And she's a wonderful person, and her life is changed. And I want her to come in and say a few words, then after that, Paul Rodriguez, go and come say, Paul Rodriguez, and from the day, first day I started the club, Richard Pryor was the first person, he helped me out, from Paul Rodriguez to every comedian, this, this award goes to all of the comedians, I don't deserve it, sir. It goes to all of them, and I thank you, and here is Tiffany Haddish, please.
All right.
Well, 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 good morning, everyone, I, I've always looked forward to the day where I stand in front of a room full of people in suits and not be on trial, this is beautiful. I'm from Los Angeles, I'm from Los Angeles, born and raised, uh, grew up on 54th and Western, and then I unfortunately went into the, uh, foster care program. And, I'm gonna first off say thank you guys so much for, if you contribute to it, and I'm sure you do, and I'm sure you deal with a lot of us. And I'm glad to say I'm an alumni from that, uh, and I came out pretty good. My social worker, Colita Lewis, if you out there, girl, I miss you, come back to social working, because you did a good job. I used to get in trouble in school a lot, um, and, uh, she was getting tired of coming up to the school, and she said, "Look, you got two choices this summer, Tiffany. You can either go to The Laugh Factory Comedy Camp, or you can go to psychiatric therapy, because something is wrong with you." And, uh, and here I am today, 10 years later. And, uh, I just want to say thank you so much to Jamie, and thank you to you guys for, you know, doing what you do, and anybody in here who paid taxes in the state of California, thank you, because your tax dollars made me. And, uh, you know, in that comedy camp, I learned so much, I learned communication skills, confidence. It was the first time that a man ever told me I was beautiful, and I didn't feel like something bad was gonna happen to me. And if Paul Rodriguez was there in my very first class, Charles Fleischer, who was like, um, like, oh my god, when he came in, because I remember that movie Who Framed Roger Rabbit, and I, I started living my life off of what the rabbit said to the detective, the detective says to the rabbit, "Why are all these people doing these nice things for you?" And he says, "Because I make them laugh, Eddie, if you make them laugh, they'll do anything for you." And that's basically how I got through life, and, and, um, and then Richard Pryor came in, and he taught me how to have fun, no matter where you are, no matter what you're doing, if you're having fun, they're having fun. And I've taken that with me, and I'm gonna say super thank you to Jamie Masada, though, because that man is like my dad, I never had a father. And he's like my, my big dad, he looked out for me, I've been homeless quite a few times. And, um, thanks to different programs that the city of Los Angeles has, and to Jamie Masada, I now have a roof over my head, I just bought a house in Los Angeles, so I'm a landlord. And, you know, you never, you never, like, I never, when I was 15 years old, I didn't think that I would ever be standing here doing this, I thought that I would be a baby mama, in and out of jail, and all kind of stuff. And here I am today, an abiding citizen, and having been arrested as an adult, and and I'm just super proud to be a part of this city, and, um, thank you guys so much for honoring my home, The Laugh Factory.
Thank you. And you're great, by the way.
Before I, uh, thank Jamie Masada, I want to tell you how disappointed I am at all of you. The obvious, uh, lack of Chihuahua representation among all these dogs. I saw French dogs, as, uh, you know, where the Chihuahuas at? Somewhere out there, there's a anchor Chihuahua. Just waiting for other Chihuahuas, I, I represent a group called Brown Jokes Matter, and I want to let everybody know that, uh, we won't be performing. Jamie Masada and I have a lot in common, uh, he's an immigrant from Iran, and, uh, I'm an immigrant from Compton. I, uh, just down the street. And, and, and what we do is a very honorable profession, we make people laugh, we, we, we bring, uh, joy to their, to the otherwise dull lives. In a world with all the, well, just look at this man. You know, in a, in a world where so many tragic and sad things are going on, we're needed, uh, more and more, and it's a growing industry. I'm proud to stand here with my fellow colleagues, and Tiffany was, uh, a young, angry little girl, when, when I saw her, and, and she's blossomed into a beautiful lady, who's gonna be a, a terrific star. And, uh, that's, I'll take a little bit of, uh, credit for that, she was a lovely girl. Most of the kids, in the over 29 years that we've, uh, brought to comedy camp, did not become professional comedians. Many of them became lawyers, and doctors, and went on to professions and finished school. What we do for them is not to teach them how to be comedians, but on the stage, we take this timid, angry child, and they blossom, they're able to talk in front of people, give them a sense of self-worth. This is what Jamie Masada has done. Uh, in, in, in the times when immigrants are bashed quite a bit, there are those cases where they bring and they contribute so much. Jamie Masada- Jamie Masada could have very well just pocketed the money and stayed at home, but he has involved himself with the poorest of the poor, people who come from broken homes with no parents, foster kids. Over the 29 years, we've seen thousands and thousands. Now, they're all grown up and men. Every once in a while, I'm going through an airport, and I was in Cincinnati, and this young lady came and hugged me, and she says, "I'm Dorothy, Paul, I'm Dorothy." I don't know this, nowadays, you want to keep your hands to yourself, you know, the losses. But she was one of our students, and she's not a famous person. She's a nurse in Cincinnati, happily married. This is what happens when you take a child who's never been given any self-esteem, and you put them in front of people, you teach them how to tell a joke, and they get laughter. It's a wonderful feeling. I'm proud to be part of that. I'm here to commend Jamie Masada, a man who has done many things. On Christmas, we feed many, many people at The Laugh Factory. We don't care where you come from. We want to make sure that you're happy. This Thanksgiving, we'll be doing it the same, and we've been doing it for how many years now?
Thirty-five.
For 35 years, thousands and thousands of meals. And you have some of the most famous actors, comedians, come and serve food. It is our privilege. And I'll let my colleagues talk. I'm very, very proud to be a citizen of Los Angeles, to be in this beautiful building, and to be a comedian. Thank you.
We're proud of you as well.
So to Jamie Masada, thank you for your years of contributing to society. Thank you for your continued contributions to make society in Los Angeles better. Thank you for providing opportunities to thousands of young people over the past 35 years. May God bless you and continue, through your work and selflessness, continue to bless the City of Angels. Thank you so much, Jamie Masada.
Let's give him a round of applause.
One last thing. Each and every one of you are invited to come and catch a show. You have a very stressful job. We could help.
Mr. Coretts.
Welcome morning, colleagues. I'm proud to welcome Los Angeles's very own Women Against Gun Violence to City Hall in celebration of Talk Day LA 2015. This is the second annual Talk Day LA, which reaffirms the city's commitment to keeping our children and our communities safe from unintentional shootings. I stand here with Women Against Gun Violence, which is an instrumental group helping to push forward sensible gun legislation. And I'm proud to have been part of the effort to pass a strong Safe Gun Storage Ordinance in Los Angeles, an ordinance that reaffirms the key message of the Talk Project: lock up your guns. I'd like to mention and thank Councilmember Paul Krikorian, who couldn't be here today, for leading the charge on the Safe Storage Ordinance. Locking and safely storing your guns not only protects children from accidental shootings but can also prevent teen suicides, school shootings, and the theft of guns by criminals. Forty percent of teens involved in school shootings get guns from home. We must commit to bringing this number down. In 2015 so far, there have been 238 child shootings. More than 2 million American children live in homes with guns that are not stored safely and properly and securely. This is where the Talk Project will produce lifesaving results. I'd now like to introduce our city attorney, Mike Fuer, who has also been working with me for years on this critical issue.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. President, members, there are few issues more important than keeping our children safe. Safely storing guns in the home protects kids and families in so many ways. As Paul indicated, it's a meaningful way to prevent suicides. I've been working with the Los Angeles Police Department on the source of illegal guns in Los Angeles, the majority of which come from theft of guns from people's houses. Safely stored weapons can't be stolen. But more than that, I wanted to be here today to highlight a partnership between our office and the city attorney's office on the one hand, and Women Against Gun Violence on the other, on this issue. They've stood with us when we have announced the prosecutions of adults, when kids have brought weapons that have not been safely stored to school and to the streets. We've had those prosecutions again and again since I've been city attorney, and the reason we've highlighted them is the same reason the Talk Project exists, and that is we need to make visible and highlight in the community the importance of safely storing weapons so we don't have to prosecute adults when their kids bring guns to school. And let me be clear about the consequences of the failure to safely store weapons by highlighting a particular example of one of those prosecutions. I think all I need to say is, a nine-year-old boy brought a semi-automatic weapon with a large-capacity magazine to his school in the San Fernando Valley, and fortunately, nothing terrible happened because of that. But it only would have been a moment here or there that could have changed what was already a very serious problem into a community-wide tragedy. Safely storing weapons makes the difference between thieves stealing guns and using them on the streets of our city, adults committing suicide, and kids horribly and tragically shooting other kids. That's why we're here. Very proud to work with Councilmember Coretts, with Councilmember Krikorian, with all the members of the city council, and with the leaders of Women Against Gun Violence, who have been partners for about 20 years with work we've tried to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mike. And now I'd like to introduce Councilmember Bob Blumenfield, longtime activist on this issue as well.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts, and it's a pleasure to stand with you and to have been standing with Mike Fuer, two champions for gun control and folks I've had the pleasure of working with on these issues for many years. So thank you for taking also the lead on this presentation, and Women Against Gun Violence for spearheading the Talk Program. Violence of any kind is inexcusable, but especially toward children, it's unconscionable. As the father of two young children, their safety and the safety of all children are extremely important to me. And gun violence in this kind of situation is 100% avoidable. The Talk Project is a great gun prevention program that teaches parents and caregivers the importance of talking to their children about gun safety. The Talk Project provides essential information and tips to help guide parents and caretakers in addressing gun violence to their children. And it's not an easy conversation. I know I've had it with my kids. But it's something that every parent has to have with their children, regardless of whether they have guns in their home, for explanations on what to do if they come across a gun, what to do if they hear gunshots, the consequences of using a gun, and much more. The Talk Project addresses it all and helps prepare parents for a gun safety talk. Though it may be difficult to talk about these issues, it prepares children for an event of an unfortunate situation, and it can save lives. I want to thank Women Against Gun Violence for their tireless effort in raising gun violence prevention in Los Angeles. For over 20 years, they've been at it, and they've saved lives, countless lives, over these last 20 years, and their continued commitment to keeping our children and our community safe. Thank you, Women Against Gun Violence, and I look forward to working with you on this and many other issues into the future.
Thank you, Bob. And now I'd like to introduce Lori Safian, the Chair of the Board of Women Against Gun Violence.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for this wonderful recognition of our Talk Project. It was one thing to follow dogs, but dogs and comedians, really? Thank you to the city council, as I said, for this wonderful recognition, and a particular thank you to Councilmember Coretts for his longtime leadership and collaboration on gun violence prevention, and also to the city attorney, who we've worked with since the founding of this organization. Just this morning, one of our board members was presenting the Talk Project to an elementary school on a visit that was arranged by the city attorney's office. We're so proud of Los Angeles for continuing to be a leader in keeping kids and communities safe by enacting trailblazing laws like banning the possession of high-capacity magazines and safe storage. Safe storage directly correlates with the Talk Project. Through Talk, we believe that we are providing the educational support for that law by informing families that they are legally required to lock up their guns and providing information to parents on how to talk with their kids about guns and having conversation with friends and families and neighbors to ensure the safe storage of firearms and make sure kids aren't visiting homes with loaded, unlocked guns. We distribute this information to parents through elementary school districts, reaching 15,000 families this year, with our brochures available in English, Spanish, Korean, and Armenian. And we are very pleased to be embarking on a new partnership that allows us to reach many more families by providing these educational materials at medical facilities. We are so excited to be working with Queens Care Health Centers, a leader in serving low-income, underserved populations for over 100 years. Queens Care rightly recognizes that gun violence is a public health issue and is bringing this lifesaving information to thousands of families that visit their health clinics. I'd like to introduce Emma Wolf, the Program Manager of Health and Education, and Bianca Rodes, the Communication Manager at Queens Care. We are so excited to be working with you. And I'd like to acknowledge our board members who are here today and say again, thank you so much for all of your work, your recognition of this program, your leadership and partnership. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Anyone from Queens Care that would like to speak? Okay, well, we will just recognize their incredible work. And I'd like to applaud Women Against Gun Violence for their efforts to educate and keep our communities safer, and Queens Care for being a great supporter of the Talk Program. The Talk Project puts lifesaving information in the hands of over 500,000 Southern Californian elementary school families. Printed material is available in Spanish and English that help parents and caregivers talk with their children about guns, and importantly, helps parents and caregivers talk with their friends, neighbors, and family about guns and safe gun storage. Safe gun storage saves lives. So I'd like to present this certificate on behalf of the city to Women Against Gun Violence for your incredible work and the lifesaving change that you help to make happen every day. Thank you, colleagues. Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Wesson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and members. Sergeants, I'd like for you to do me a favor, and I'd like the neighborhood councils that are going to be, receive an award today, to come up and stand with me. This is their award for their hard work and all that they've done in the community. I'm just acknowledging them, but they're the faces that I want you to see. Maybe Marquise, you can come up and stand with us. We don't have Mr. Weezer with us today, but I have you, so our committee's at a quorum. We're here today to recognize several of our neighborhood councils from out the city of Los Angeles with what the department calls the Empower LA Awards. But I want to say on behalf of my committee, and Mr. Harris-Dawson is with me today, that we believe that each and every neighborhood council that serves the residents of the city of Los Angeles have helped empower their community, and they all deserve this award. So let's just give a round of applause to every neighborhood council, every volunteer, and everyone that has given of their time. I want to start out by, we're going to start out, we're going to go to one of the valley areas of the district, and we're going to recognize from Council District 7, Mr. Fuente's area, the Selmar Neighborhood Council. They were selected for their leadership in putting on the Make Your Horses Count event, an event designated to showcase the equestrian area within the city of Los Angeles. And because of their good and hard work, they were successful in having the city of Los Angeles now designate certain areas as protected K overlay areas. Give them a round of applause. I'm now going to slide over to North Hollywood, and North Hollywood East and North Hollywood West Neighborhood Councils, and Mr. Krikorian's district. Yeah, I heard somebody say, "Yeah, give yourself..." Yeah, you do hard work. Give yourselves a yeah. Okay, so from the South Valleys, these two neighborhood councils have collaborated to improve, it was like a city property that was just a mess. It was blighted, it was dangerous, and they came together and literally with the work, working directly with Mr. Krikorian's office. They literally transformed this area that was once blighted into a water-saving garden artistic landmark. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done. I wish Mr. Buscayino was here because now we're going to get on the 110 freeway, and we're going to go south, where we're going to recognize the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council, who put together a project where they wanted to make sure that residents of their areas were prepared for a neighborhood disaster, earthquake, or what have you. So they organized over 63 block leaders, brought them together. They walked block to block, house to house, designating who lived in the homes, what skills they had, individuals that were into construction, ham radio operators, and unbelievable, created an unbelievable network for the individuals in that area in the event that there's a natural disaster. And the thing that's really kind of cool is that they really worked hard to make sure people got involved in the CERT classes. They even helped people pass the ham radio license exam. So we should give them a round of applause as well. Mr. Harris-Dawson, I'm now going to go to what's south of my district, which is in your district, and recognize groups that are from the slant... your district, and recognize groups that are from the Slank Alliance, which would be the Empowerment Congress Southwest, where they were committed to do a few things. Just quickly, and I wish I had more time so I could give more detail on every council, but they were determined to make sure the individuals in their region understood what was going on where related to the election. They coordinated candidate forms, they did a lot of outwork, they did the very best that they could to take advantage of social media. So again, and I think they're one of the first neighborhood councils in our region to take advantage of, what is it? I mean, it's called Nextdoor, right? That's a little after my time, yeah. But give them a round of applause. We now go a little west of my district, Council District 5, Mr. Paul Coretts, where we will honor the Mid-City West Community Council. Now, this was another very, and in fact, all of the neighborhood councils that are represented today, I think it shows their commitment and their creativity, their intelligence in recognizing what their region needs. So what they did here is they all came together, and they came up with a comprehensive plan as how they were going to work with the district. One of their priorities was to create two bike safe routes and also where you can walk safely. So what they were able to do is work with, again, the council office. They were nominated to receive a Metro grant call for projects. I believe they were awarded about $1.8 million, I think, and then the city contributed, and now they have a north-south and an east-west path that they created. So let's give CD5 and the Mid-City West Neighborhood Council. We're now going to move to the airport kind of region area that is in Mr. Bonin's district, another area where Mr. Bonin's office has been involved with the West LA Sawtell Neighborhood Council. And that neighborhood council has come together to do a lot of things. If I can remember from my other notes, they spend a significant portion of their budget on outreach, trying to get more people engaged. One of the things that they just did recently was they helped rename an area in Sawtell to the Sawtell Japan Town, recognizing the importance of that community as that area started out. They partnered with Nike to reopen Skate Plaza and to do some renovation work on the Civic Center Plaza. So Mike Bonin, these are individuals from your area. Let's give them a round of applause. West Sawtell Neighborhood Council. Also in the House, we should have representatives from the Eagle Rock Neighborhood Council. Is that true? Is Eagle Rock in the House? Well, I'm from Eagle Rock officially now, today, and I'm in the House. And in Eagle Rock, the neighborhood councils work very closely with Mr. Jose Weezer, and they're a very detailed lot, and they publish a lot of reports and make sure the community knows the agenda items, what's going on on the agenda, and they have minutes from their meetings, and they're very organized where it relates to planning activities, and they have played a significant role in giving guidance to Mr. Weezer as he makes land use decisions that affect that region. Ladies and gentlemen, please give our Empower LA awardees a round of applause that they And I just want to say on behalf of Mr. Harris Dawson and myself that it is a great honor for us to work directly with you on a regular basis. I was just in Studio City last week, and I think the third, I'll be back out in the valley area. The neighborhood councils do good work. We're proud to be, work with you. Ladies and gentlemen, one last applause for our citizens that work very hard to make our city the best city in the nation. God bless you. God bless you all.
We do have Mr. Coretts.
Oh, wait, I forgot the West Lake South.
Oh, don't forget anybody. All right, there we go.
And I don't want to do that. You see how loud the West Lake South Neighborhood Council was? Now, wait a minute. Where are you?
I'm here, sir.
I'm going to bring him forward, because I met, you and I met at a meeting in my district.
Yes, sir.
And I am looking forward to visiting you on your side of town. And so it was very, we had a big meeting when, in fact, Mr. Harris Dawson was there, was kind of an introductory meeting of us and you. And so I want to thank you for all of your hard work, and I really want to thank the neighborhood council that you represent, and I'm really looking forward to visiting you and trying to get a feel for how we on the committee can help you. I also received a note saying that I should also thank the Planning Committee members. So let's thank the Planning Committee members. Anyway, thank you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Let's go in the back and take some photos.
We have Mr. Coretts. Well, one second, one second. Mr. Wesson, we do have Mr. Coretts on the queue, been sitting on the edge of his seat, waiting to speak.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to greet all of you properly, since I didn't have a chance, because I greeted all the dogs instead. But I have a number of friends in the group. Years ago, I helped to brainstorm the creation of the neighborhood councils with Joel Wax and Greg Nelson, and I'm thrilled at how it's turned out. I also want to specifically greet my Mid-City West folks, great neighborhood council, partially in my district. I used to serve on the Policy Committee of Mid-City West, and you've done an incredible job on everything from making bicycle-friendly streets to supporting our bids and on and on, helping me with the fight against manchinization and a number of other things. So thank you all for your great work, and thank you, Mid-City West especially.
Thank you very, very much.
We know what we do, it's okay. They can forget about us, but we're here. We're here. Almost.
All right, let's go ahead and turn our attention back to the agenda on item three, I believe called "Special" by Councilmember Bob Lumenfield.
Take this up. Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to call this one "Special." This is a motion that I co-authored with Councilmember Weezer. It represents our shared commitment towards creating a greener, more sustainable Los Angeles. And I also thank Councilmember Fuentes for moving it through committee expeditiously and well, and especially Councilmember Weezer's staff for working with me on this, but also the Mayor's Office. The Mayor's Office has been instrumental. His Office of Sustainability has been conducting stakeholder meetings to move this through the process in a very unique way for a motion such as this. I want to make sure we call out the efforts of the Mayor's Office. Because of this collaborative effort, this is a partnership that you see that you don't always see. It's a motion dealing with sustainability, and it's supported by both the NRDC and a number of environmental groups, and it's also supported by the Building Owners Management Association, who is willing to be green on a number of issues, but you don't always see the two connected together. And this is one of those motions where all the parties have been brought together in a very positive way. I also want to thank Fernando Cazares and Martha Cox Nikidiman, both of them, for sending speakers to the Energy and Environment Committee last week. For me, as a council member, I've made greening the San Fernando Valley and the city of Los Angeles a priority of mine for years, and I know many of you have as well. The DWP has moved us forward, adopted a 15% energy efficiency reduction goal by 2020. Mayor Garcetti with his executive order by 2014 to reduce water usage by 20% by 2017. These are part of the solution. But we have to realize, more than half of the carbon emissions in most U.S. cities come from our buildings, our buildings. In Los Angeles, our buildings are responsible for 51% of our carbon emissions. When we started this mission and looking into this, we discovered something really remarkable, that half of the city's electricity demands come from just 4% of the buildings. Half of our electricity use, 4% of the buildings, just a handful of owners. That's why I, along with my colleague, Councilmember Weezer, and the Mayor's Office, put the stakeholder process together to seek the public input of how we could incentivize, how we could work with these building owners that really use up half the emissions that are just 4% of the overall use. By working collaboratively with our city's largest consumers of energy and water, we're creating a force multiplier that will reduce our overall energy and water use while saving businesses and taxpayers money. The results, this kind of partnership has been, you know, I'd like to say we're on the cutting edge in LA, and we are in many respects, but this has been done, you see, in programs like this, 10 participating cities altogether are projected to cut over 7 million tons of carbon emissions annually, the same impact as reducing climate change pollution as taking three to four power plants offline altogether. It's the smart thing to do, it's the right thing to do. Additionally, reductions in consumption will decrease the stress on the power grid and water supply systems and allow the city to recover more quickly from a natural disaster. Lots of benefits to this. We can't wait for this to happen. This is an ordinance that's almost done. It'll be heard, once we're directing the City Attorney to put the ordinance together. It's going to be heard in Plumb Committee shortly, and then we can get this in council and get the ball rolling by the end of this year. So I'm excited about this, excited about the partnership, both at different levels of government, but with the private sector, with the environmental community. We're doing our part, not just here at the city, which is our first step, but rolling it across with our private sector partners as well, and I ask for an "I" vote on this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we're going to go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and call item one. Now, it's called "Special" by Cards. Atsuya, Nastimi? Not here. Eric Previn?
I'm going to speak for one minute on this, FYI. This is 1B, 4958 North Hesperia Avenue. It's interesting that you're taking public comment now, because it seemed like you approved Mr. Coretts' sort of waiving of the fees for something like $1,500, $1,400 for this person, who came down here several times, multiple times, and pointed out the absurdity of this particular violation. When that happened, the building group, the building sent her more or less an email saying, "We're not living up to Mr. Coretts' particular offer." This is just appalling. This is like a kind of extortion of your residents, folks. You ought to look at the New York Times, Mr. Bonin, the folks of you who do pay attention to national news. You know, they are really looking down on this kind of tagging people for revenue. And you may say, "We don't get much revenue," but then what is the purpose? Because you're dragging people down irregularly on old violations. You don't need to be a scholar or a genius to see that, and that's it. Thank you. That's one minute.
Great. Thank you very much. Also on item one, we've got Annaber Leonard, I believe, and then followed by Richard The first one was 4259th Avenue?
Good morning, Council.
Morning.
My name is Leonard Annaber. I came here before. This order to comply was completed in 2007. I left the contract, transferred the property to my cousin, and I'm back over here. He transferred the property in my name. I have documents that the property had been complied to since 2007, and what I was told that it was done late. Their record showed 2008, that's when they closed it, but my record showed that it was done right after the citation was done, and I'm requesting this, Council.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and continue your item for 30 days to give you an opportunity to work with building and safety as well. That'll be December 16th.
December 16th.
We'll bring it back December 16th, but if you can step to the side, we can have, you can work with the council office as well as scheduling that and working that out with the Department.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And just to let you know, Richard, we're going to do the same with you as well, but you're more than happy if you still want to speak, that's fine. But we're going to continue yours 30 days as well to do the same thing, to work with the Department and see if you can come up to some other resolution.
I'll speak. Okay, I had a suit on three weeks ago, but I didn't know, I thought I was going to just deliver some paperwork and leave. So 30 days. My lawyer was going to trial, he had an operation, he had to go into emergency surgery, so the court date was postponed. I don't know when that'll be. I doubt it'll be within 30 days that he will be in trial. The trial is based on this property, and three of my other properties, they were taken with forged deeds. It says, all of them said it's a bona fide gift, no value, nothing in return. Three of them were from a nonprofit out of Nevada. The other one was the same crooks that did it on my other property, and the property went back in my name through a judge. What happened was, the, one of the banks loaned these people's money on my place of business. They sold it, the bank sold it, Bayview Bank sold it to popular, I forget what company right now. They own that company, they sold it within themselves to the bank. This is, that has to be dealing with the trial. That, it went to the new judge, the new judge says, "Well, I got to put all my properties back in the original names," which is, three of them is a nonprofit, Potential Life Foundation out of Nevada, and there are four other companies. So I doubt if all this is going to be straightened out within 30 days. So there had to have been everybody involved in it, trying to get the title company, we got the notary, got a deposition on her. She has the facts that I never signed those documents. They were all recorded illegally. So I got a lot of stuff straightened out. I could go on and on, but I think you got a general picture. I don't think it's going to be within 30 days that we're going to get my property back in my name through the trial. If any questions, ask me, and I can explain it better, a little more detail.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, also on one, we've got Wayne, Mr. Hunt, and followed by John Walsh.
Yes, and CD5, very nice lady, showed up the second time now. They had a deal, knocked 50% off of that lien, but because she wanted to come up here and talk, they revoked that deal. See? See, that's what happens with these liens. And over in CD3, for example, a certain building and safety man, Gold, for example, goes into a house and looks at a wall on a complainant, and then decides to go and cite two walls at a cost of $14,000 to cure and correct. That's the city's use of building and safety. They're using this process to take and retaliate against people and to claim there's anonymous informants, but they will not tell us or any of these claimants who these informants were and what their juxtaposition to the property was. Is it a neighbor because of a loud dog, for example? No, they remain anonymous. So this poor lady is an example. She comes down here, she can't spend all day waiting for presentations, first two hours worth of presentations for dogs. Everybody loves dogs, but it doesn't have anything to do with liens. So why didn't they cut the thing in half? Why? Say you're going to cut it in half, and they're not. It's because she's white, and because you're in one of these rich, white districts, you got to pay retail price. And Mr. Blumenfield knows that in his district because he's doing that to me right now, and Kretz knows that because he's doing it to that nice lady in his district right now. They use this process as a retaliation means. It has nothing to do with public safety. It has everything to do with the mafia power of this corrupt body.
Come on up.
I am the Red Chief Hunt.
Stay on the agenda item, please.
For the record, that is the record, sir. My card says the Red Chief Hunt. I'd like to be introduced like that. Second of all, it's about time you guys started working with people. I got to really give you guys big two thumbs up on working with the residents. Paul Kretz, I'm really in your district, I just haven't really told you. My address is right there in your district. But on this one, I want to thank you guys. Give the people 60 days to, or to after the New Year's, to get their problems fixed, and then stop the BS. Don't find them, forgive them. That's going to be their Christmas present from the Red Chief Hunt. I'm in charge of the City of Los Angeles, and please pronounce the card title right, sir. You can read.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, that concludes the public comment on item one. We'll go ahead and take that item. Please open the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, John. One more.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Again, as you know, I think this is a fantastic project you have here. It helps renters. I know it drives you crazy when I give you compliments, but when you deserve them. What this means is that if your landlord allows a code violation, has given them plenty of time to fix it, my landlord has fixed code violations that the city told him to fix, and he fixed them fast, then they have to pay a lien. But if the landlord, if the landlord comes down here and complains about it being too high, it's going to be reduced by 50%. So I, this is a win-win proposition. The landlords win and the tenants win. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Great, thank you very much. So, Mr. Kretz?
If this is working, yes. Just for the record, we did work with the woman who was mentioned by a number of our public testifiers, and we did approve the deal where all the late fees and penalties were removed, so she's only paying for the initial violation.
Thank you very much for that. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, thank you very much. And sir, if I can please have you not stand in the center of the aisle. Please have a seat or stand in the back. Thank you very much. With that, colleagues, we also have a special that has been circulated. We're going to go ahead and take up the special.
So the council can, at a regular meeting, by two-thirds vote, find that need for immediate action came to the attention of the city after the regular agenda was posted. So I believe you're going to read the findings, and then the council will vote to determine whether the findings are met pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2. Then you'll vote on the substance.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So with that, what I'll do then is I'll read the, for those of you that didn't hear, the microphone was faint. Since the special was circulated, we've got to read the findings, vote on the findings, and then actually vote on the motion. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and read the motion in its entirety into the record as well. On October 23rd, Southern California Gas Company Cruz discovered a leak at one of its natural gas wells located in its Aliso Canyon storage field in the county unincorporated area adjacent to the Porter Ranch community. According to the gas company, they have been in constant contact with the LA City and County Fire and Hazmat Departments, the LA County Department of Health, the California Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources, and the South Coast Air Quality Management District. The Los Angeles County Department of Public Health was notified on October 28th. Odors related to the gas leak have been affecting residents in the Porter Ranch area. According to LADPH, a community meeting hosted by SoCal Gas focused on exposure to methane gas and recaptains, which are odorants added to natural gas. LADPH advised that methane gas itself poses little direct health threat upon inhalation in an outdoor space. Recaptains, however, do pose a health threat to the community, including short-term neurological, gastrointestinal, and respiratory symptoms that may result from inhalation. Community complaints of nosebleeds, headaches, nausea, and symptoms persist. According to LADPH, these exposures do not constitute an immediate danger to life, and permanent or long-term health effects are not expected. However, daily short-term symptoms are expected to continue as long as the odors remain. On the November 19th directive to the Southern California Gas, Dr. Rangan, Director of the Bureau of Toxicology Environmental Assessments, and Angelo Balamo, the Deputy Director for Health Protection, stated, quote, "Southern California Gas Company should continue to abatement process to characterize and repair the subject gas leak and eliminate the odorous emissions on an expedited basis in consultation with the appropriate regulatory agencies. All mitigation plans should cite public health protection at its highest priority." In the interim, Southern California Gas Company is to offer free temporary relocation to any area residents affected by odors from the Aliso Canyon site. A recent update on the gas company website informs that SoCal Gas has begun a complicated process of drilling a relief well, which may take several months to complete due to the complexity of the project. They are unable to provide a more specific estimate of how long this effort will take at this time. Residents in the community can expect to hear unusual noises and smell additional odors as a result of this process. In addition, some of the fluid being pumped down the existing wells may come back up and spray into the air. As occurred on Friday, November 13th, when the community was notified by email and robocall that because of the release of this so-called fine mist, they were advised to remain indoors for several hours. The Department of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources and other state and local officials and elected representatives have been regularly updated by SoCal Gas on the progress and conditions at the site. We understand that the daily air sampling and monitoring is taking place at several sites, both within the leak site and in the community, both by the gas company and by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. The gas company is making their sampling results available directly on their website. The gas company is asking residents to call 213-244-5151. Once again, 213-244-5151, or fill out an online form if they believe they have suffered harm or injury as a result of the gas leak at www.socalgas.com. Due to the ongoing and severe nature of the leak, in addition to the uncertainty as to when it will be repaired, it has become necessary for the relevant agencies to appear together to ensure that the proper information is being accurately disseminated and to answer questions from the city council and the community members in a public, properly noticed forum. I therefore move that the Southern California Gas Company appear before the Los Angeles City Council as soon, as it can be properly agendized, in order to answer questions about the Aliso Canyon gas leak and their actions today to remediate it, as well as future planned actions. I further move that the Los Angeles County Public Health Department be requested to appear at the above hearing to report on answers to questions regarding the November 19 directive. I further move that the California Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources and the South Coast Air Quality Management District be requested to appear to answer questions and relay information regarding issues within their respective jurisdictions regarding the Aliso Canyon gas leak. I further move that the city and the county fire departments and hazmat units be requested to appear to answer questions and relay information regarding issues within their respective jurisdictions regarding the Aliso Canyon gas leak. This motion was signed today on an urgency by all Valley Council members, with the exception of one who was simply absent for today's meeting. Colleagues, if you have any question on that, we have common cards that did come in after we started the item, after the item was circulated, but we're going to go ahead and take those up anyway. Normally, we don't, but we will. And so we'll go ahead and take those up for one minute each.
Well, what a coincidence. You've got a bunch of gas infiltrating homes with a large Jewish population in Porter Ranch. What is going on here? Why are Jewish families being gassed in this manner? Why are these people not being relocated? Call 213-244-5151. Demand that you receive immediate relocation assistance to the nearest Four Diamond Hotel. And make sure all of these charges are drawn from the furniture account for CD12, because it is the fault of that person who's never here to allow this kind of thing to go on, to allow Michael Fuer, who spends more time having me illegally arrested than protecting the public safety of the Jewish community in Porter Ranch. Racist pigs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm concerned about the gas leak and the dangers of these fumes, or however the smell smells like, to be carried through in the different areas of the neighboring or adjacent cities, or wherever it does go. What repercussions will there be from this gas leak to the neighboring, not only the residents that should have been relocated by now, but what about those that are the residents in the nearby areas? We are all going to be affected. Now, what are the dangers? And that, to me, is a concern. Again, we're already facing enough toxic, we're being inundated with so much toxicity that we definitely need to find out what lurks from these gas leaks, and what level of the gas leaks is it? Is it a range five, or how do they grade these gas leaks? I'm concerned for the residents. This is sad. Truly, this is sad. And get them out of there as soon as possible, for God's sakes. And God, really, and help those in the adjacent cities. We want to put an end to this, please. Thank you.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Porter Ranch. I cannot, this is the Friday the 13th gas leak. Then you say, "Oh, it'll have minor effects." Major effects, short-term. Minor effects, long-term. That is based on an adult. If you are in Porter Ranch, if you're in this neighborhood, and you have a small infant, six or seven, it can kill the infant. This should have been the number one issue. Gas leaks. This whole goddamn city is falling apart, and all you want to do is get down on your knees in front of Garcetti and do the Lewinsky thing.
All right, you're not on the subject.
Key, I want to say-
You're way off subject.
I'm not off subject, but the poisoning. This city is being gas poisoned by, and what do you give? You don't give a fuck.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. Now you're disrupting the meeting. Your time is up. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to the city attorney for the findings.
Right. So first, the council must, sorry, first, the council must vote by two-thirds to find, based on the facts you recited, that Government Code Section 54954.2 is satisfied. Then you vote on the substance.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, now we'll go ahead and vote on the actual motion. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and move that urgent forthwith as well. With the urgent forthwith, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to call on Councilmember Paul Kretz for another presentation. Thank you, colleagues, for that. By the way, appreciate your helping that.
Thank you, colleagues. Today, I'm proud to welcome Lynn Evola, artist and founder of the Peace Angels Project. Lynn moved to Los Angeles in the fall of 1992. Shortly thereafter, she was inspired by a story in the LA Times about the number of children killed annually by guns in LA County. The number was 1,000 at the time. Lynn immediately thought of her eight-year-old son. Today, more children are being killed annually on a global scale than during the 90s. Today, I've asked her to join me here today to tell you a little bit about the Peace Angel Project and her vision for Los Angeles. Through the power of art, LA can lead a creative initiative to promote peace while at the same time taking weapons off the streets by requesting a million weapons to construct a Los Angeles Peace Angel monument. This monument would serve as a physical representation of our city's commitment to peace and protection of our citizens, and would occupy a culturally significant location. Now, I'd like to ask my colleague Bob Blumenfield to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz, and for taking the lead on this presentation and on these issues generally. It's much appreciated. Ms. Evola, thank you for being an inspiration to Los Angeles and to the world. The amount of violent crime that the city experienced during the 1990s is something I hope that we never relive, and I commend Ms. Evola for finding ways to express herself during that time that had a profound impact. During this time of violence, she was able to use beauty and art as a way to lift up communities and lift up the nation. The Peace Angel Project serves as a reminder that peace is possible, and that it's up to us to create a better world. Taking violent weapons and repurposing them for art can create change. It demonstrates that it does not matter what may have been in the past. Something beautiful can be transformed into the future, a metamorphosis of sorts from changing guns into art, changing weapons into a higher calling. I want to thank Ms. Evola for continuing the Peace Angel Project till this day with angels all over the world. Thank you.
And now, if we could ask Lynn Evola to say a few words.
Thank you both, Councilmen. I really appreciate being here. It's taken 23 years to stand before you. To have a site in Los Angeles, a prestigious site, to begin to request a million weapons throughout the western part of the United States is a huge achievement. We understand the balance of peace and protection, and it's eminent, always there. But our kids are dying, we know that. And Los Angeles has stood with heroes to diminish those numbers and to create inspiration. I am founder of the Peace Angels Project. I'm also co-founder of the Angel of Peace Awards. 20 years of giving awards to those who have done extreme good in Los Angeles County. We are asking for a site, a prominent site, in Los Angeles for this monument to be not only a beacon of hope at this time, acting like the Pied Piper, requesting a million weapons that will never hurt anyone again, but also to stand in perpetuity from the great state of California and the great city of Los Angeles, where my son was born. We are asking to put a monument that will stand for thousands of years. Created from nuclear missiles and street weapons, you'll see your own reflection, and there lies the rub. What are we doing, and how do we stand for future generations? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. And I should point out that there is a sample of the Peace Angel Award that they give out annually, made from guns that have been- annually made from guns that have been collected and remolded. New York City's Peace Angel incorporates weapons from the tri-state area, other east-coast cities, and the United Nations. And my office has been working with Lynn to bring her vision to Los Angeles. I'd like to ask my colleagues to join me in helping to bring to Los Angeles its very own Peace Angel. Currently, we're looking for a location, and I'd appreciate you sharing your ideas with Lynn. I'd now like to present these certificates to the Peace Angel Project and to founder Lynn Evola.
Thank you so much. That is so amazing. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. We're going to go ahead and take item, no, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, if I could just make a very quick, brief introduction. If I could have my interns from Council District Seven, almighty matadors from Cal State Northridge, give them a round of applause. These young men and women have interned in Council District Seven now for eight weeks doing everything that you can imagine we do in a council office, from working with city departments, working with the community, but more importantly, working to solve some of the problems that we face. They've been a real joy to work with. The staff appreciates everything that you've done, and congratulations on surviving the eight-week program. Thanks a lot.
Wow, thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you very much. And with that, we're going to go ahead and take 13 and 14 together. John Walsh on 13 and 14.
No connection to Hollywood Highlands Mall. And J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Again, number 13, this is, again, this is the rent escrow account program. It's the other, the flip side of what I was up before. In other words, if you have code violations in your apartment and the landlord, final number 13, we don't have too many of them today, but adopt the accompanying resolutions removing the following properties from REAP. In other words, these people have, this is just one here, for, at South Arnez Drive, that's near Beverly Hills, and the people at South Arnez Drive are not paying their rent to the landlord anymore because of the violations. They're paying it to the city, which holds the money until it gets released. And believe me, this is not in other cities. You have absolutely no right in cities like Glendale to, this doesn't happen there. You continue to pay your money to the landlord while your apartment is out of compliance with all, with so many, with a certain number of violations that haven't been repaired. So, again, when you, and the final maps here, on these final maps, they sneak in code changes, and when you, suddenly, you find a mall opening across the street from you, it's because of these little code changes that are put in here and scumbag city councilmen who think they're representing you, but they're not representing you. They're allowing your neighborhood to be upzoned. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, and you're speaking on 13 and 14, sir.
Porter Ranch, the new Auschwitz. So, the whole city of Porter Ranch should be put on the REAP account because you're sitting there gassing little Jewish babies and elderly people with this gas, and you're not doing nothing about it. It took a whole week to agendize it on a supposed emergency. CBS reported this story today, then it became an emergency. So, there you go. Now, we've got more or less the bullshit part of the meeting, which is the REAP program.
Mr. Spindler, you're not on topic, sir.
13 and 14 are bullshit items, so I'm on topic.
This is on rent escrow? You need to speak to the issue or have to sit down?
13, yeah, that's a bullshit program, and maps are bullshit. So, we're on the bullshit portion of the subject. So, these little maps are nothing more than little tiny Sudetenland, little fucking enclosures, where they take, rob people for Quimby fees, put the Quimby fees in the general fund, and they don't do what they promised the taxpayers to do. Then they go to Plum, and they sneak in zoning changes and little tiny amendments so that the payoffs come back in those entitlements. When you entitle a property, you increase its value to the diminution of neighboring properties, which is a taking, but you don't represent the people. You sit in your chairs that automatically vote yes on these items. You illegally consolidate unrelated items and turn the meeting under the Ralph M. Brown Act-
You're not speaking on the issue, Mr. Spindler. You need to speak to the issue.
Into a bullshit meeting. And that's why the bullshit items of 13 bullshit and 14 bullshit have been consolidated into a two-minute bullshit public comment. It's all bullshit. You shouldn't allow REAP, you shouldn't allow these maps to be done. Everything you do on 13 and 14 should be vetted by the Department of Justice first.
Thank you very much. Next speaker on item 14 is Eric Previn.
It is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2, and obviously, this item has to do with CD2, 4411 North Lemp, which is lying on the westerly part of Lemp and the southerly part of Landale Street. This is a guy named Daniel Ferst, F-E-R-S-H-T, and the representative is a guy named Jag Narayan. They're familiar names to this council because on Tuesday, there was an item 20B, which was the same team doing a similar development. This is where they come in and they buy, in this case, for 700 grand a parcel, and then they get the entitlements, and then they say, because it's, we need to produce more affordable housing in Los Angeles because it's such a critical problem, they say, we're going to put up multiple units, eight in this case. But a quick study shows that the real estate community says these are all of these eight individual units are going to be worth more than 700,000. So, at about 250, whatever, thousand per the cost to build these things, these guys are going to make about $4 million, and we are going to get, I think it's 28,000 in Quimby fees, which I think is a partnership with Parks and Rec. The previous speaker said it goes to the general fund. I think it goes to the parks, which is nice. But the problem is, this is a disaster, and these are ruining the neighborhoods. And the neighbors in this particular case and in the one at 20B mobilized. They got petition after petition. They went, this neighborhood council in Studio City, very favorable toward most developments, was vigorously against the other. And yet, down here at City Hall, the 15-horseshoe, don't care, don't know, don't know what's happening, the building and safety folks are happy to, you know, work things out, and what you have is these giant boxes supervisor, sorry, councilmember Martinez, councilmember Wesson over there hiding in the corner. That's how we do it. And it's not effective, and we're not, in fact, increasing the affordability and the livability of Los Angeles. We're doing quite the opposite. We're making a bigger problem for ourselves with these fancy condos on small lots that devalue the property.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Yeah.
That concludes your time. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Hunt on item 13 and 14.
The Red Chief here, name on the card. I want to talk about number 13, and I want to talk about forgiveness. At this time of the year, we should forgive everybody who's trying to pay out or have any payouts. City council, I want you guys to forgive this one, and on the map changes on number 14, the zoning part of it, you know, reconsider that issue right there and really, really reconsider the zoning changes of the maps and things like that. Take a second look at that. This is the Red Chief Hunt, and you sure know how to make me take off my cap. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. That concludes cards on items 13 and 14. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Both items pass. We're moving on to public comments. First speaker, Jessica Kent, followed by Nelson Castillo and Jaclyn Richardson.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Jessica Kent. I'm a CORO fellow in public affairs, and I just wanted to note that we'll be doing a spring project, that I'm creating a proposal about the positive stories for council members' careers in public affairs, and I would be elated to invite any of the staff or the council members and elected officials themselves to speak about their trajectory, their vision for young, hopeful public servants in the future. So, that will be in the spring, and I'll contact each of your offices. Another thing to note is that there was no ADA/ASL interpreter here this morning when there was a deaf individual who came as an invested constituent from the neighborhood councils, and I think it's important to note that that delay enabled or disabled him from participating. So, thanks so much, and have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nelson Castillo. Are you here? Nelson Castillo is not in the room. Jaclyn Richardson? Richardson, is that you?
Good morning. I believe that the homeless population is composed of immigrants mostly. Some are Russian, who are black, white, Hispanic, and everybody else. Some are American, and some may be holographs. Holographs. Holographs also work for Central Casting and Burbank as actors. They get a salary. Holographs look just like you do. They walk, talk, and act like humans. I believe some work downtown Los Angeles. I believe, it's my theory, that some of the black people who were killed wrongfully by LAPD officers were killed by police holographs who were wrongfully programmed. You have to ask LAPD if you want to, if they have any. I could be very wrong about it, but that was my theory.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Antonio Ramirez, followed by Mr. Walsh.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stop the funding these black nonprofit organizations, the NAACP, Black Panthers, United Negro Fund, and et cetera, and all other nonprofit organizations. Because, as you know, they are, what they are doing is they're using the blacks, such as the African-Americans, Jamaicans, Haitians, and Africans, to gang stalk innocent, legal, law-abiding citizens, and they act as like foot patrol soldiers to harass you, violate you, even here at the council chambers. I had three individuals harassing me. This is not the only time. It's happened several times. I will not be bullied. I will not be attacked. I will not be violated, even if there is LAPD officers here. I'm sick of it. I have the right to freely speak when there are vandalisms, violations, attacks, and any forms of human violations done outside as a homeless individual. I have brought in my vandalized shopping carts that blacks have done and Latino gang-banging wetbacks. Stop the violence.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Next speaker is John Walsh, followed by Mr. Previn.
I ask everybody to Google Porter Ranch gas leaks. These gas leaks have been going on for three weeks, and we just found out about it here. And there's actually a story about this gas leaks in Porter Ranch in the San Francisco Chronicle, but not in the LA Times because of the vile, disgusting, vomitous editor who is a non-white by the name of David Maharaj. I don't care, it's in the Jewish neighborhood. Jewish babies are being poisoned to death in that neighborhood. You don't give a shit, Mr. Rue. You don't give a fucking shit because you got elected, and now you kiss the ass of your black leader, Herb Wesson, you fucking scumbag, you racist piece of fucking shit. White people, Jews-
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, you cannot address members- ... are being killed, babies in Porter Ranch. Mr. Previn, followed by Michael Hunt and Wayne Spindler.
It's Eric Previn from CD2, and I've been trying to speak with the LAPD Representative, Mr. Ado, who, for reasons which are completely unclear, will not talk with me, so I will have to discuss it here. The term I'd like to discuss is called retaliation, Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Blumenfield, I know you care about people's personal safety. My home was broken into very recently. I live in a nice neighborhood in Studio City, and the only thing taken was my computers. You know, as a public watchdog, this comes as an enormous concern to me. I've taken the steps appropriately with LAPD, obviously, but I wanted to bring to the attention of this board that any perceived feelings of retaliation, certainly, CD10, with whom I've been trying to interact, have been utterly and completely unresponsive to the issues that I bring up regularly. I'm really worried, and I want all of the city council to be aware of this incident, and Mr. Ado needs to speak to me so I can update him appropriately. I really, I never thought it would come to this, and I want to be clear that there will be no permissible retaliation against public speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker, Michael Hunt, followed by Wayne Spindler.
Good morning, Matt Dowd. I'm on blackout today in support of Michael Hunt, being discriminated against for 699 days now by the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Hunt, you have to speak directly to the council, lean into the mic, not your recording, sir. You need to speak to the council and not your recording.
Well, it's a violation from the city, and it's Wendy Grill speaking about city council about the violation and the payout to Michael Hunt. I think that I should be allowed to let old city council hear what they did because it cost the city of Los Angeles $3 million to settle this case with two different groups. Why wouldn't I let you guys hear it so you guys wouldn't do that again? And I was just arrested on Channel Fox for the same thing. You guys ought to listen to what I'm saying because when you guys get the letter of demand from my attorney, it's going to be before you guys, and that's $430,000. I get $215,000 for wearing a costume.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Spindler, you're next.
Talk about retaliation. Last Tuesday at the Police Commission, I'm arrested, held for 13 and a half hours on a fucking $5,000 bond. Wednesday, Inspector Gold from CD3 comes out to my house, says that there's a problem with one wall. He cites me for two fucking walls for Mr. Blumenfield and his fucking retaliation. And then this morning, my lock on my door was broken. They tried to break into my house last night. Why? Because of the other speakers. We are being retaliated against. You fucking people are retaliating against us. Now you want to invade my home? You realize what would happen if I'd catch one of those guys? They'd talk and tell me who the fuck hired them because you guys hire those people, all of you. All of you do this, lynching me, gassing fucking people at Porter Ranch. Fuck you, city council. Fuck you.
That concludes public comment. Mr. Clerk, Mrs. Clerk, what else is before this council?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Seeing that, can we please rise for adjourned motions? Thank you, Mr. Hunt. You cannot interrupt this meeting. Thank you very much. Adjourned motions, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. It is with great sadness that I ask we adjourn today's meeting in memory of two young women whose lives were savagely taken away from them in Debs Park on Wednesday, October 28th. Gabriela Jennifer Calzada was only 19 years old. She attended SOLED Enrichment Action Charter School, grew up in Glassell Park on Drew Street, and spent her whole life there in the 13th District. She was a client of Aztec Rising. When she first became a client of Aztec Rising, she was on probation and was wearing an ankle bracelet, but Gabriela quickly managed to turn her life around, and eventually, her probation was dismissed.
O'Farrell, can you hold on for just a sec?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler is causing interruptions in the back. Sergeants, can you please escort him out of the council chambers? Sorry about that, Mr. O'Farrell.
That's okay. Gabriela Jennifer- Gabriela enjoyed the sport of boxing, and she is survived by her mother, Sebastiana de la Fuerte. Gabriela lost her life along with her friend Brianna Nicole Gallegos, who was only 17 years old. Brianna attended Divine Savior Elementary School and Soto Mayor High School. Brianna grew up and lived with her mother, grandmother, and uncle in Cypress Park in Mr. Sidio's district. Brianna came from a very close-knit family and was never involved in gangs. She is survived by her mother, Avet Gallegos. Unfortunately, these two young lives were tragically cut short. We send our condolences to the families of these young women and take some comfort in knowing that the investigation is moving forward and is yielding results. May Gabriela and Brianna rest in peace, and may their families find peace and solitude in the tragedy, and knowing that the greater city family cares very deeply about what happened and will not rest until there is justice brought to the perpetrators who committed this atrocity on these two young women.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Ru?
Thank you, Madam President. It's with a heavy heart that I announce the passing of Dr. Soon Ki Lee and ask that we adjourn in our memory. Soon Ki was born in South Korea on January 21st, 1968, and moved to the United States at the age of 15. In a sense, she beat most odds and expectations. Soon Ki graduated from UCLA and earned her M.D. from the Medical College of Pennsylvania in Philadelphia. She trained in internal medicine at Baylor College of Medicine, underwent subspecialty training in hematology oncology, and held a faculty position at the University of Michigan before returning to Los Angeles with her husband and two children. After returning home, Soon Ki worked at Kaiser Permanente in Panerama City, where she continued to practice medicine. On a personal note, Madam President, it's with a particular heavy, heartbreaking when we lose someone who spent their life serving those most in care of need and attention. Soon Ki was a successful professional, but most of all, she was gracious and humble. Soon Ki left us too early at an early age of 47. She was abruptly diagnosed with one of the rarest forms of cerevascular disorders in neurology known as Moya-Moya Disease that currently has no effective drug or surgery procedure. She is survived by her husband, Dr. Young Jig Lee, son Sun Woo, and daughter Sora. She will be missed by all those that knew her and all those that she cared for. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Ru.
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's unfortunate that this past Monday afternoon, Nikki Valdez, a freshman and rising star at Notre Dame High School, collapsed during practice and later passed away at Sherman Oaks Hospital. Students at Notre Dame had nothing but kind words to say about Nikki, remarking that she always came to class and practiced with a big smile. And if I may, Madam President, Nikki is, to our knowledge, the 12th high school student athlete in the United States to die during practice or during a game this year. In order to truly honor the memory of Nikki and all those who have left us far too early, I would like to say that it's incumbent upon us to protect and to ensure our students, our next generation of civic and community leaders are safe under our watch. With that said, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Nikki Valdez. Our thoughts and prayers go out to her family, friends, and many students, teachers, coaches, and administrators that make up the Notre Dame community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ru. To my left, any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, have a great weekend, members. This meeting is adjourned.